Actually, I'm here to discuss the proposal that I submitted to the chairman. And this is really within the context of updating the master plan. State law makes provision for communities that have already adopted a master plan to do something which is called an economic development supplement, which is really an effort to update your business industrial section of the master plan, economic base basically, your housing supplement, which is they're looking at your progress towards affordable housing, and also any progress you've made in terms of open space and recreation development. This would suffice and this would make the town and continue to make the town eligible for state grant purposes. So it's really an effort to satisfy the state requirements and also to update those portions of the master plan that are essential to keeping the town in good graces with the state. So this proposal would enable me to work with the town to do those sections and come up with this at the end, and also look at what to have in terms of zoning issues and so forth that would play into this. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to, you know, to respond to them. This would really interface with what the Conway School is doing, what OCPC is doing in terms of doing a housing production study. You've already done a master, a open space plan that was done in 2014, I believe. So really, the element that we're looking at is what has happened in the town in terms of industrial and commercial development over the last 10 years. And that's all I'll be focusing on primarily, so. And there's no rush to get into this. We're, you know, we want to see what the Conway School comes up with, we want to see what OCPC comes up with, and I'll be working with the business community of the town to see what issues there are with the zoning bylaw and so forth, so that's where we are.
And as you recall, at town meeting, we had a vote for $20,000 for the master plan, which, as you all recall, was going to be costing us around $150,000. But with the Conway School and what Dan can do, we'll come up with that plan, and I, you know, for under $20,000, so it'd be my recommendation to, go ahead.
Should be good. You know, I do the comprehensive economic development strategy for the region, and I've just been doing the most recent five-year estimates as far as income and all the stuff that's pertaining to the economic development section, and there has been, you know, a lot of changes in the town as far as income, economic development, and stuff like that since the last time it's done. So, you know, I'm just seeing this in my updates to the SEDS talk. It'd be interesting to see how this, how your updates for this plan, you know, tie into this, Dan. Should be good. So more change than people realize.
I appreciate anything you can give me.
Everything with your contract was straightforward, made sense to me. The only thing I wondered if it was included, because Conway School has put the responsibility of making the final draft to the master plan to us, so that sounds like they'll be handing us the data, and someone in the board or yourself would be formatting their word or whatever they give you. I can imagine, that can meet up a lot of time. I just didn't know if you had anticipated doing that.
They will give us two written reports, and then they're going to also have it on.
I'll use whatever is germane to, you know.
Okay. Well, just that, you know, this stuff could run up to eight hours to format someone else's stuff and work and to pull your hair out. All right, okay, just want to make sure that you didn't get cut off guard with that.
My two requests of the Conway School were to identify, I guess, what the best practices are nowadays, what other towns have been using and found success with, or what they're encouraging towns to embrace, as well as, again, what the specific steps we need to take are to fill the master plan itself. So those are two of the things that I'd be particularly looking for in these sections is, like I said, what are other towns doing that are considered best practice now that we should adopt, and what steps we need to take to go forward? The other question is, do we need to have any sort of public hearing or public comment period with these sections?
No, you don't. Actually, what I would recommend is that once the economic development supplement is prepared, we hold a hearing on it, Planning Board, and then recommend it to the Board of Selectmen for adoption, and then forwarding to the state.
Okay.
That's the procedure that I would use. And basically, that's the same procedure we used with the master plan adoption.
Okay. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the contract, that would be fine. Obviously, it has to go by town administrator.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
You can go, or you can sit here all night if you wish.
Well, I'll stay for a while. I do want to say this, that this is really a mechanism to get, to pay me for my efforts. And I'll be working with the board. I tend to attend the meetings of the board to update you. If you have any questions, you know, Liz knows how to reach me, or if you want, I'll give you my contact information, but know that I'm available to you for any questions, and I'll be at your monthly meeting, so that you can have access to me, whatever.
Great. Thanks, Dan.
I'll just become a spectator now. Thanks.
6:05, 9:99, Adams Street. John?
I'm actually here just to see where we stand. I know last month you had a, you had a meeting on this, and my apologies, I would have attended and had my head on straight. But, so what I've done is, I reviewed, I reviewed the letter from the consulting engineer. I had a couple of comments on what they're doing. I reviewed this with the people and who I now work for, so at Precast Specialties. And they are going to, they wrote a letter to you.
Yes.
So they wanted to make sure everything, you plan on taking care of everything, and anybody's satisfaction. It's just that, not to put the, not to say you were blaming anybody, it's really no, there really isn't any blame on this as far as what the differences were. They just, it's a job that, it's a job that just went and went and went a lot longer to go through, stop, finish. They had people that were involved that left, and so forth and so on. There were some things that were done, the parking area, and that was, anybody some changes to it, to actually, I think, better the situation. And so, and it came down to, I got there and they said, geez, we've been going for so long now, why don't we see if we can get this thing buttoned up, doing as built, present it to the town and put it into it. Well, then your consulting engineer had a lengthy list of things that had to be addressed, and that's what we plan on doing, we're going to address them. But they just wanted some more time, so they asked for a couple of months to review everything. I've been in touch with one of the, the vice president up there, and that's what he had said, he was of the opinion, he just wanted to be able to go through everything. I did go through things, I have a few things here. One of the unfortunate comments that has to be made is that the consulting engineer asked that the engineer of record write a letter, and that can't be done. Mr. Clark passed away. He had cancer, and he passed away last November, so we won't be able to get a, obviously, a letter from him saying that everything is okay. And looking at it now, I'm there all the time, I mean, it's been, it's been, it's been functioning now for almost three years, and everything seems to be functioning properly, although some things have to be, will have to be completed. There was, there were some other things that he had questions on. The septic system was one of them. We did a plan for the board health, it's there, and it's been, you know, we did the plan. The system that was shown on the approved plans was schematic, because we hadn't had a final approval from the board of health. So it is different than what was shown on the approved plans, but it is an approved, it is an approved design, septic design, and so, and everything is there, so that's why I left a couple of copies of the septic system plan there for you in May. The overhead cranes, he had talked about the overhead cranes not being there. One of them was not, but the large overhead crane that is between the two buildings was there prior to the new, was prior to the new building, so that was always there. But there is a small crane in the back that they use for their steel to unload their reinforcing, and that was put in. It's on piers, all of the areas, when I looked at it, all of the areas that there are changes were all areas that were considered to be, when I did the design, considered to be impervious areas. They are impervious areas. I don't think that the changes, I don't feel that the changes that were done to the site that weren't shown on the approved plans are going to affect the overall, especially drainage-wise, are going to affect that adversely. It is smaller, the detention basin is smaller, as he had said. They did expand the pavement out and back, I took a look at that. I was going to talk to you guys, you use about that, in that the basin works, but it doesn't work, it's, it was designed as a detention basin, for whatever reason, the contractor dug out the bottom of the basin. So you do still have the amount of freeboard you need between the water table and the bottom of the basin. That's proper. It's just that it is, the basin is lower than the design. So, I mean, the resolve to that, and I'm waiting to see what they have to say, is we simply bring some fill-in and raise the basin up to the inverts of the pipe, and then it would conform to, it would conform, because the freeboard, the freeboard that was on the design plans was well over a foot, which is what, which is what you require. And then, and then the other, the other, the other pieces of the pie beyond overlay the spillway, we would construct the spillway, and we would construct the swale that goes out into the wetlands, and whatever else has to be done. That's my, that's my opinion, that's what I'm telling, that's what I am telling the principals. And then as far as the pavement along the back, the back of the building, I think those are the, that was the major items that were there. Most of the, most of the building items are, I don't want to say they're not, they weren't shown on the, and they should have been shown on the approved plan. But the, you know, the pavement in the back, I would, I would think, you know, I, a portion of it should be, probably should be done, and that's how I'm, that's how I'm going to approach it with the other principals. So it's going to be a couple of months before they get everything all together, and then I guess I'll be back, or someone from Canada will come down and be back to explain everything to you, so that we make sure that, you know, that the asset conditions are proper and everything is functioning the way it's supposed to.
So do you want to continue this till April, April 1st, or is that enough time?
He wanted two months, so February, March, April. I mean, May would be okay, because you have a town meeting on April 1st, right? Oh, no.
No.
That could be delayed.
So, would you want to make it May 6th? Would that be better for you? Is that?
As long as that's acceptable to everybody. That's what I have with me.
So on the request that the hearing will be on the 6th of May, so I'll make that motion. Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Is there money available for reviews?
I don't think so.
Something's going to have to be addressed.
Just let me know. Whatever has to happen.
I'll email you what we have left, yeah.
Okay. So it's May 6th, at 6?
Yes.
Thank you.
Obviously, the biggest thing is the drainage.
Yeah.
That's always.
And it is working. Working better than, I mean, it's coming up. I mean, you've had those monster storms, it doesn't get any, it doesn't get, it's leaching into the ground. It gets into the sediment, I've watched it, gets into the sedimentation basin, and sits in the basin and can't, and it doesn't, that fills up, and then it dissipates, just goes into the soil. So it's working better. I mean, typically, that area, typically, that section of Abington has high water table, but very good soils. And so that's what, that's what we're running into with that.
Can you leave me a copy?
You can take, you can take some of these and then leave one. You want to, we keep this one?
Are they all the same?
I don't know. I think that they're supposed to be.
Okay. That's all right.
This one's mine, I think.
That's all right, this looks okay. Thank you.
We don't need all of them. Do we need those? Do you want to give them back to him? We don't need any.
2015 is when it was brutalized, yeah.
It seems like they didn't finish it that long ago, because it looked like it was still working.
Sean, on 430 and 440 Center Avenue site.
Well, this is a continuation of a site plan we were reviewing at the start of the end of 2018. It was completed by Dave, we were engineers, we, that kind of continued because we wanted to regroup and see if they want to move forward with that plan or not. The answer is they don't want to move forward with that plan. They redrafted it for a number of reasons, one, just a duplex instead of a multifamily. So there's no need to continue and proceed with any engineering review or continue with the site plan hearing, so I just ask for it to be withdrawn. Cross it off, there's some things to do.
Is it, are two families allowed in the TOD district?
No, this is.
No. It's almost near the Rockland line, across from the Rockland.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, wrong place.
Okay.
And the answer to that, a special permit, we have to lose all the board.
Thank you. And 615?
On 12th Street here for Chris and Gregory O'Neill for their definitive subdivision plan that was submitted to you, I believe we called the review on that because the fire chief had some comments that he wanted to see some changes to the road layout, which would obviously affect, change the drainage, change the catch basins at all. So what we're asking is that this be continued so that we can meet again. We've already met with the fire chief once, we're going to meet with him again. Our concern is there's conflicting forces in effect, we're trying to widen the road versus filling in more wetlands. We were already got at 4,500 square feet, if you go over 5,000, it triggers the out of course, engineers, a lot more other stuff. Does anybody have a Katina Way or Orchard Lane?
Maybe I can, let me just read this, because I didn't, I should have done it. The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 11th, 2019, at 6:15 PM with the town offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, Mass. to review a definitive subdivision plan for two house lots entitled Katina Way off Orchard Lane, Abington, Mass., prepared by Christopher and Greg O'Neill, by Kelly Engineering Group, 0 Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass., 02184, and for a special permit under 17535 to allow work within a local floodplain and wetlands protection overlay district. The plan is dated January 11, 2019. The property is owned by Paul Mabey, 41 Orchard Lane, Abington, Mass., and Mark McSherry, 4 Lee Drive, Rockland, Mass. The property is located on Assessor's Map, 2937 Lot 3444A, in a residential R20 zoning district. Plans may be reviewed at the Town Clerk's Office. Wayne Smith, Chairman of Advertising of Rockland Enterprise, January 28th and February 4th, 2019.
So it is Brooklyn Street, this is about a nine-plus acre parcel, trying to join Orchard Lane, and the fireworks, they should enter Orchard Lane, you then have to cross the wetlands, and you get out to approximately six acres of open land. The O'Neill brothers, both of whom both live in Abington, wanted to build two houses out there. We called the zoning board, showed them a plan where you create two lots and two 500, 600-foot long driveways, and then asked the zoning board for a variance to allow us to have one common driveway instead. One gentleman voted against it, so that kind of blew that out of the water. So the only other way to build two houses out back is to come to the planning board, excuse me, and submit a definitive subdivision plan, ask for a private way, which still looks like a common driveway, but it goes to the planning board instead of the zoning board, and it requires a lot more detail as far as drainage and more review. That being said, we want to talk to the fire chief, he wants to make sure that everything, the pavement's wide enough, the radius is wide enough, and we want to basically knock, kind of lock that down before you proceed. So we may be sending you an updated set of plans based on our further conversations with the engineer. That's how we got here, and this is why we're trying to put it off so that everyone relates to neighbors. I'm sorry we couldn't notify you, we had to do this kind of dog and pony show tonight and say we'd like to put it off here April 1st meeting.
And someone had a question? No? Okay.
O'Neill got a half?
No, and that was Elvin. Usually this hearing, hearings on the first Monday of the month, February 4th, and that's where we submitted our plans for that hearing, but then the planning board changed their meeting schedule to February 11th, and he had already had a previously scheduled vacation for his birthday, which is where he is right now, so they're not here, and he apologized as to not being here for this meeting. He will be there for April 1st.
So in terms of the updated plans that you had just mentioned, are those, are those going to be sent? When would we be able to get a copy of those up?
They have to be filed, if you don't mind, or do you need?
Yeah, we need your name and address, please.
Chris Bridges, 21 Orchard Lane.
No, Mr. Bridges, we have to file before March 18th, because these guys put it in public record. And you know Chris? I mean, we can get your copies in, you know, before April 1st, it's on the first day. I'll give you my copy before April 1st.
So a motion be in order to continue the hearing to April 1st?
Motion.
Motion made, seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
You won't get it on the notice, it's just we're all going to come back and.
Okay, fine. All right, thank you. You bet. Thank you.
We'll chat.
Thank you. I don't know whether Sean's doing the batting cages or not, is that?
But I know of.
Yeah? We have the batting cage situation on approval. I don't know where we actually stand on that. We've.
We have the master, but we don't have any money to have it reviewed.
Right, so we need to get money to have it reviewed, or is there anything that needs to be done compared to what was on there, or anything? You know, we don't know.
I don't have a plan.
We received an actual 30?
We did, for the batting cages.
Is that last month?
A couple of months ago, we.
You voted to allow the occupancy, and I have received the asphalt, I just don't have any money to send it in anywhere to be reviewed.
I assume there was a site planned on when they were going to convert the cages to apartments?
As far as I can find out, PMP did the original review.
What conversation we had, we thought that was gone with the computer? Is that computer problems?
Yeah, I don't, but I think PMP did the original.
So we have no plans, no?
They may, though.
But we don't?
We don't.
And is PMP still in business?
Yes.
The rumors that I heard?
Yes. They've merged with another company.
So those plans will be available?
So we're not even sure PMP still has all that stuff?
No, but I can find out if they do.
I'm asking because of the conversation we had, that got lost with the computer.
Yeah.
So why don't we ask for those and then find out what it's going to cost to review it, and then get ahold of the owners and find out, get the, get the money for it. All right, reduction in tri-party agreement with Mento Brothers, Cleveland Pond Estates. You've got that in front of you. Any comments on it? They're reducing, they're reducing the bond. Actually, we could have a vote to reduce the bond. I can find it here. From 950,000, well, it isn't. I don't know what our bond is, that's what their loan is, is 950. Yeah, that's what it, that's what it comes down to. But I don't know what the bond is, right? Please?
Do we have any sense of what they have left to do?
26,392 is on the back of the, on the back page. Who worked this out?
I can send you, they did this based on, their engineer is PMP, what they, what they came up with for a number.
So a motion be in order to sign the contract with the bank that they withhold $26,392.50, according to the contract that you have in front of you. You make the motion, Bob?
To 26,392, right?
Right.
Because their number is wrong.
Oh, it is. Oh, wait a minute, is it? Can't sign the contract. 26.
302.
Yeah. There's, the contract says 3, 26,302.50. What this says is 26,392.50. I don't think that's anything we have.
The contract, the contract has a typo, because in other places it has 26,392.
Yes.
But just that bolded number is 36, is 26,302, so there's a typo that they need to fix.
It's just that one place, so what we could do is initial that where that is.
And Rick, it's on the back, the form L that PMP came up with.
So we'll correct it with our writing to the figure that we have, the 26,392.50, and initial it. If they have a problem.
That's the second paragraph down on page two.
We have that seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. We'll do that at the end of the meeting, all right? We're going to have the other, actually, the members can sign it. The sketch plan at 392 Randolph Street, I don't think we have to consider that either, right? Is that?
Nope, they're here.
Well, they're here. Okay, great.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Stephanie Hoben, I am representing the county of Michigan. I am representing the foundation of the building. So we submitted the sketch plan just to get some of your thoughts. It's an existing 2.62 acre lot located at 392 Randolph Street, and what we'd like to do is subdivide it into three lots. The existing home would remain the frontage on Randolph Street, and we're proposing two new lots in the back that would be accessed off of a private road off of Dorsey Street through the existing property line already, basically have that. We're proposing a, it'll be a private road, 22 feet wide with a hammerhead on the end as opposed to a full cul-de-sac, with water, two single water services rather than a single, a water main. And we are also proposing hopefully no sidewalks, and it'll only be two lots, and there's no sidewalk to connect them on Dorsey Street.
The actual pavement width is, what is that?
20, 22 feet.
The pavement width is?
Yep.
Because if you all know, we've had a problem with the 16-foot pavement width, and it really doesn't work. And I think you've also got some information from the fire department on the width of the, actually, the ambulance is wider than the fire truck, so...
Yeah, I thought that was off the map to put all that information together.
Yeah.
I mean, that was a lot of stuff. This is unusual. We've never had it come in and just head off into two hammerheads kind of thing. So I'm not, I'm trying to picture how this, what will it look like when the driveways are attached to it, and where you've got services, I assume that won't be the, the driveways where...
No, so most likely the hammerhead might change a little bit. I'm just, so basically, it would kind of end up coming up probably, this one would come up more like this.
So those will extend into the drive?
And those will extend into the drive. And then, of course, we would run a truck turn to make sure that, and make sure that the fire department would be satisfied that, that if something, they were allowed.
Have they seen this?
I'm not sure.
No, I don't think, yeah. Have they have?
They didn't send anything back.
They didn't?
Nope.
I don't think they have. I know they don't mind hammerheads, but I thought that this T thing, they would have a problem with, the T shape. Nothing, okay.
Yeah, I distributed, I had 18 copies and I distributed them.
Get an idea where they're going.
I just happened to notice that you want to use pit curb on this, and this planning board is well-known for not liking pit curb.
Will this be a private driveway, or would this be a public road?
It would stay private.
Stay private?
Yep.
Accesses through an easement, or do they purchase that?
Nope, that's actually part of the existing property.
Okay.
Road drainage, is that, is that road flat? I don't know, I didn't see the grades.
You know what, I don't, at this point, I don't think we have grades yet, but it was pretty flat from what I recall, being out there.
I apologize, I didn't get out to take a look at this existing site. Because that's the other thing, we would see is some kind of a catch basin, how are we going to...
Right, so basically, we haven't looked too far into...
We got this, okay.
Into the drainage X. We just wanted to make sure that this was an idea that you would accept before we went further.
It's real similar to what we just did off of Rockland Street, other than the configuration of the, I think the fire department's going to have something to say about that.
In general, just the two lots being subdivided with a single road in doesn't bother me. I don't know if that, if this non-cul-de-sac is right, is the right way to go. I'm looking, it's too much white paper to get a sense of what it's going to be part of. Wayne, do you have any, any thoughts on that?
No, no, I know, actually, the T's probably better than a hammerhead, because you've got a little bit more asphalt to work with, but all depends on who's parked there, too.
That, that part was that little plowing, how, when the two driveways come down, where that extra, where that would be going. So I think when you, if you go further forward with that as to address where that kind of, that kind of sensibility, where's the snow being put, be piled up?
Yep.
And the other thing is, it wouldn't be a town truck, it would be private way, so it probably should be put on the, on the plan when you make the plan out, that it is a private way, so there's no question.
Yep.
So people are going to come back in a few years and say, how come the street hasn't been accepted? Stranger things.
I believe it.
Was this subdivided recently, or how did this land get kind of shaped this way?
I think they've owned this land for quite a while, like...
With that narrower opening out to Dorsey Street?
I don't know about that, but I know the...
Because of, because of the openings always been to Dorsey Street, I'm wondering why this is described as Randolph Street, not Dorsey Street?
The full frontage for the lot is on, existing lot is on Randolph Street.
Oh, so it would be...
So it's currently one large lot, and so we're cutting off the Randolph Street lot.
Okay. So right now, the home at Rand, on Randolph Street has access out back to Dorsey Street?
Yeah, I mean, it's wooded.
Right. Okay.
The other thing I want to point out on that is that the, the frontage, you're getting the frontage by putting an invisible radius in there, that 60-foot radius, which is not going to exist out there for real. So, you know, so otherwise it would be a straight line break down, and you would have any frontage at all. So I'm just wondering about that, where technically you meet the, technically you meet it, but yet we're not going to fill it out, you know, we're not going to fill out the cul-de-sac. I don't know how we feel about that. I guess it's, I think it looks smaller in the plan than it really would be in real life.
Yeah, because...
20-foot, just looks out, just looks out in scale, yeah.
Yeah, if it was a roadway, it would have the frontage, but it's really not a roadway. It's sort of an interesting, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's a clever way of doing it.
Very similar, we just did post-terriers off of Randolph, uh, Rockland Street.
Right.
Yeah.
They had a little more. Well, I guess I don't have a problem with it going forward.
Obviously, there's some drainage and things to be taken care of.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that it...
I'm not too sure about that. You're going to have to get to the fire department, what the layover of the...
Yeah, I'd just like to see what Chief Nettle, you know, says about this, or Deputy Chief around house.
From the sewer department, they reviewed the request for information regarding the hearing. This proposal located on Assessor's Map 5188 must be approved by the Board of Sewer Commissioners at a regular scheduled meeting, so... And then the real estate taxes, it looks like they're in arrears, according to this, they would have to be paid at some point. No.
Well, it's important.
Any other comments from the board? So you're going to come in with a preliminary plan or a definitive plan at some point? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with the contract review on Conway School, you all, you all got that, too?
This is like a lesson in contracts, too.
I know it.
Very well written.
I keep my copies at the end.
Yeah, I know it. Are you all in agreement with that?
I have a motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. I get asked by people who want to submit comments but couldn't make the last meeting, if they still can. Are we doing that?
We, you need to send them into Liz, and then Liz will send us...
ASAP.
That's what I wanted to find out.
And to dovetail with that, I think I sent you guys all the email about February 22nd as their presentation.
At the school?
At the school. They want to know if you're coming, so if you can get back to me or get back to them as soon as possible.
That was during the day, right?
Yes, it is, and they, they actually gave it, I figured it was going to be an all-day thing when I talk to you, Bob, but it's, I guess our segment is like an hour or so, an hour and a half, and they, I think they, I've forgotten what their scheduling was, but it was like 1:30 or so, but, or 2:30. I think I, it was probably 2:30 or 3 o'clock, and I requested if we could be an hour or so earlier would be better, because I know the traffic would be better for that, but...
It still kills the day.
Please?
It still kills the day.
Yeah, it's in Northampton, it's a, it's a trip.
How far away is that, Jim?
It'll, it'll take you now and 45 minutes, yeah. Depending on the traffic, maybe less, maybe more.
Are you still going, meeting in March 2, another, two of the...
Yes.
Over that page.
I'm not sure that's going to be a public...
March 4th and March 11th, the same two days.
Yeah, they're going to do another public, according to what I read.
March 4th is the...
The master plan.
Here, the 11th is a regular...
Right, yes.
They wanted to do another public meeting.
What's that?
They wanted, I read, you know, what I read there, that they wanted to do another public meeting.
That's fine, yeah.
And that would be at the same moment?
Yes, we've already booked it.
Okay. And on the, on Carriage Hill, you all have that information in front of you?
There's a lot of context, I can't see the new cul-de-sac where that is exactly. I understand what they're doing, it's just that you don't see the rest of the cul-de-sac. Well, in this area here, someplace right near the cul-de-sac.
You have the cul-de-sac, this is like the back of it.
Yes, this is a narrow section there.
Those three are existing.
I was surprised they were able to get so much, enough pitch to get all the way back over there.
I guess the only question I had was, that 12-inch pipe, the rest of it will cover it? I presume they, I don't know whether, is it a 12-inch pipe all the way?
Yeah, we're putting in, I think, 108 feet, 108 feet of 12-inch pipe and putting it in a manhole, passing halfway from the beginning to the end, because right now the water doesn't flow out correctly.
But it does, it does take it away eventually, so I would, the only thing concerned me whether that 24, that, I presume the pipe going down the road is, is that, we don't, I don't know what that is.
The existing pipe that's connecting to?
Yeah.
I honestly, I personally don't know, but I know the engineers did scope it out.
Oh, okay.
They, they basically engineered the whole system to its endpoint.
So right now, the problem is that the pipe that runs from the catch basins to the main storm drain, it's, it comes in lower than the outpipe? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think there's parts of it where the, where the, someone put in those extra catch basins right off the edge of Carriage Hill, water has to fill up until it gets into the pipe, and then when it gets down, I'm not sure wherever it's going, it's too low in that catch basin, so when that catch basin fills up, the water backs up, the pipe backs to where it first came, and then the water just has no way to get out. So if he's putting in a new pipe, that would be adjusted as well. It's a 12-inch pipe, will take the water out, it'll come into that end catch basin at a higher spot. It actually, halfway down, it stops at another catch basin, so it can kind of drop in there, have a little bit more absorption, and continue on to that one. The engineers can give you a much better explanation, and I just did, but this would be an improvement to the situation. Plus, they're, they're now channeling the water into those immediate receptor basins as opposed to having that sheet flow that's coming out. They're going to try to gather it and let it go directly into the basin, so you don't see it coming over the curb.
How is, how is it coming out from behind that house that's on the right-hand side just on the cul-de-sac? Is that getting rid of their water, too?
Their, their water has been rectified. We were, I was kind of surprised that we were here last time saying that they have worse water problems, because we've had previous conversations where, I mean, they sell it water in that yard, but if you recall, we added a whole other swale in some of the houses that are behind their houses, which collects the water, retains it, and then releases it slower than it was going in there before. So, and then there's another whole swale that is between, let's say, the Veterans Place subdivision in their side of the house, has a swale that directs it towards these catch basins. So both of those are working, with the exception that the swale that comes off of the, the side of their house, we'll call it, is allowing the water to sheet flow at one point. We're now going to control that and kind of trench it into the catch basin. The other one, the other retention pond that's behind their house is working better and has improved their drainage situation over there. Plus, as the grass continues to grow, some of those houses weren't, the lawns weren't in, that's going to also be a benefit, we're, we have more absorption. So if the board is okay with this plan, and whatever approvals you need, our goal would then be to eventually approach all the neighbors on Carriage Hill who are the owners of the road, get them to approve it, have them sign off, give us permission. Steve would have his contractors go in and do this sometime in late spring, summer, whatever, whenever the weather allows for it, and, you know, try to get that taken care at his cost.
Does, what was the answer to the question? A minute. Oh, does this have to be in a... Even for the town, do it, will the town be...
It's not, it's a private, it's a private way.
Well, that drink, that, all that riprap. It's on the side of this boundary of property, I just wonder who, who owns and who's maintaining?
It's, right now, man, right now, the catch basins are existing, those three. I don't know the exact history. Mr. Mulligan, Ed Mulligan had developed this property, did some time ago, and you know the history better than I. There was an issue with it, it was never accepted as a townway, and they did not, when they made their plans, they did not take into account the water that was coming from the Veterans Place subdivision flowing onto Carriage Hill. So they put those, added those three catch basins to try to collect that water. This is before Veterans Place was even built, there was already water coming that way. Now, we're trying to channel it more, so we're kind of just improving what's already there. The, Steve has been in a lot of contact with the neighbor around the bend there, who's right next to the retention pond, basically. It was all in favor of it. They want us to put a couple more evergreens up and things like that, which we'll do, which is not part of the drainage stuff. But if this easement needed, we'll get that with the neighbors. Right now, there is no written easement, it was just done, so...
So what is the process for getting permission to dig up the private roadway and do this?
Get asked that, and we have to get all the neighbors on it, and then we'll try to coordinate a schedule with them, too, because obviously, there's going to be a time where we're in the road. DPW, we're going to ask them just to oversee it, even though it's not, it's a private way, because eventually that water goes in the retention pond, which will then go somewhere where it's down property. So we'll be coordinating with them, so that's what else is going on. John, John's already, he's familiar with the situation.
So do they all have to agree, or is it just majority rules that...
It's a good question. We're going to seek the approval of everyone, because theoretically, we would really only need perhaps those homeowners that own, that have frontage along this part of the road, because with a private road, you own to the center of the street in front of your frontage. But everyone who has a lot has a right to use the entire street. So theoretically, we could just go to just those, you know, three or four people. Our intent, though, is to go to everyone, because it's...
Well, I mean, whose frontage do these drains sit on? Those two drains?
Most of it, I think, is in the, I forget their names, it's not the people we were just talking about, it's the other people next to the big retention pond. Most of it, most or all of it's on their land, and they have a dent strip that comes down. And then we talk to the people that are in the middle of the Carriage Hill Island that have frontage there. Like I said, we're going to notify everyone, because eventually, there's going to be a machine digging up the street. Don't want any surprises on our Monday morning.
At some point, I still would like a post-mortem in terms of how we got to this point.
At some point, I still would like a post-mortem, in terms of how we got to this point, um, in terms of, because I, I don't think any of us, again, realized we were okaying the discharge of water onto another development, which apparently we did, but I still want to know, like, where that decision was made in the process. As well as this corner house here, we were assured that it was going to flow away from these properties, not into this person's backyard, but that's what ended up happening, and it's been rectified with that burn, but that there was something didn't go right there, or something, some calculation wasn't correct in terms of where the water was flowing.
I think there's a little bit more to it where, like I said, the water was flowing this way already, so whether it's Veterans Place or whoever owns this, has the right to let that water continue flowing that way.
Right.
What we ended up doing was, we changed the flow and the point of flow, which is where the engineering comes in and is all, and I, if you're gonna adjust the sheet flow, then you have to take into account the volume of water and the speed of the water, um, which is, this is going to do more, because the catch basins that we put in were just insufficient. The, the backyard of the people you're just talking about, I, I think, honestly, I think there's been improvement there, um, well, as you know, we're not, we're just not allowed to worsen an existing problem. But I can get Larry Silver from SCA in here, one of these future meetings, maybe give you kind of a big picture thing of that issue, the backyard issue and these drain things, maybe before we get started, because we're certainly probably not gonna get started until May or June, I would think. So it's the time to come in and give you a little update, maybe I can talk to Larry, talk to Liz to get on the agenda.
That'd be awesome. Did we need to, we don't need, did we need to...
I, I, I just think to give them tacit approval to go ahead and, and put the, I mean, we have no problem, I, I have no problem with them doing it, the rest of the board, it wouldn't do any harm to vote for it, after they get a permission from the, from the residents.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the twelve-inch pipe's gonna be sufficient to, to move the water and...
Yeah, I think the twelve-inch pipe's sufficient to move the water, and I think, but, but the question again is, will it still be twelve-inch further down?
Right.
The water eventually gets there, and eventually it, it gets cleared.
Yeah.
But I guess the question that both Rick and I have is, is, where you're hooking in with the twelve-inch pipe, is that pipe gonna be able to take it?
Well, there's no pressure to prove this down, because we're not gonna get started, if you'd rather, why don't I try to schedule Larry to come in here, and he can talk a little more help than I can, and we can get approval at that point. So whether he can come in in March, or April, or in May, I'll try to find out for him.
Yeah, and in the meantime, I, I would work on the neighbors, because it's gonna take some time.
Yeah, we, we can communicate with them.
And, and, and it's, it's in the best, it's, I, I'm sure that there was some ice and stuff there, that's what we had, without going all the way back, and I'll, I'll explain the whole thing to you, Rick, sometime, but, uh, we had a problem there, we had no bonding or anything else, we ended up getting a private contractor to come in and do it, and we, we ended up getting some extra money from the, from the developer, which eventually paid for it, and we didn't have enough money in the bond at the time for other reasons, so...
Yeah. Yeah, this, this will certainly be an improvement, it's like every problem in the world, it'll be improving, let the water get out of there much faster, better than this.
I, I mean, I, I've been up there quite a bit, and Egan certainly does a, a good job with the, keeping the place neat and everything else, and...
No, no one has stepped out of their way to do what this engineering drawing is, no one's ever done that, stepped out of the way to, to improve something that really wasn't,
No, he, I think you probably meant Stephen, these, these reputations, everything to him, so he doesn't mind you wanting a little extra.
Yeah.
But we'll let me try to coordinate a meeting with Larry, maybe Stephen can get in too, and, um, you know, then I think we'll all be a little bit more educated, so if anyone asks a question moving forward, you all have the answers that you need. Would you prefer a vote in May?
Whatever's convenient to you.
Thanks.
Thank you. On the zoning Board of Appeals agenda, is there any questions there?
I have one. The Bedford Street House that they're doing, it's next to the strip mall, on the other side is one of the Goslin Hou- buildings.
That's this?
Yeah. So, couple of questions. Was it initially approved as a two-family residential? And now it's going to commercial and residential? And the other question is that I don't recall giving permission often for a hundred percent site coverage, just paving everything, um, which this property does. So, is there any recourse there in terms of how that happens? I mean, just because they don't come in for site plan review doesn't mean they can do one-hundred percent lot coverage, does it?
No, usually they ask for, they ask for a variance on it. They didn't, huh?
Is this, um, Hawkeye Fence?
That's, that's right next to, uh...
Yeah, I think that's Hawkeye Fence.
That building, it doesn't seem to be...
He owned all of that property, and he owned that house, and it was a duplex.
Yeah, it was a...
They didn't come in to us at all?
Right.
Yeah, that's right, that never did come before.
No.
But, you know, the...
It started life off as a duplex, right?
That's where they found like the two-hundred tires stuck in the house or something, is that, is that the property, or is that the one next door?
It was the one next door.
Is that the Goslin? Okay.
I always wondered why no one...
But I guess if, if someone does that, is, is that, is that allowed under any circumstance under our bylaws, that someone can just go in and pave the entire property, entire lot?
I would say that would be, no, and at, at that point, it would have been the building inspector with the two unit.
You know, changing the use, I think, it doesn't say in our rules, but it should change, it should cause a site plan review.
So I guess I would ask the zoning board to investigate if there's a change of use, and also whether or not it's in compliance with lot coverage as currently built.
It's definitely vacant all along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'd never even put front stairs on it until a year ago.
I assume that's Hawkeye.
You got the yellow building?
It's, it's a one-way between the mall, the shopping center and...
Goslin's.
Goslin's apartments.
This is the one I, I saw part of this on television, that P.A. commission guy wants to go in, he wants to put it out.
Yeah, that's it. Two.
Two. I, I mean, I don't really know much about that building or the history of it.
When they did it, it's funny, they used part of the old foundation, they have, part of the foundation is the old brick foundation from the old building, I noticed that when they were building that.
That narrow little thing down there.
It's almost like a rebuild of an old building.
But it's, it's been like this for eight years, I mean, I moved to the town ten years ago, and it's...
That's the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, Goslin's place got finished, and that place was never occupied.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's, there's no signage here, there's not, I mean, it looks to me like everything the building inspector's got, either gotta make a play for it himself or call for a site plan review.
Yeah, I think I've ever seen parked in there Hawkeye Fence trucks. There's a copilot there every day on my way to work.
And I would be rather surprised if he didn't...
Was there anything else to, by the zoning board?
Well, one, one, I have a couple of questions here, but on the very left one, which is regarding enlargings, uh, two-twelve beds, which are enlarging four signs that are currently located. Are we, my question is, are we not re...
We have nothing to do with the sign bylaw anymore, right?
I don't know when that...
At town meeting, it went back to the...
Okay.
I'm, I'm not even, I don't even know where that is.
That's Ivana.
What is it?
Ivana, the, uh, the apartment's a step way back across from Orange Street.
There's an old house next to it, it's kind of set.
Did you see, uh, that was, Kylie's built it?
It's next to Lowe's.
It's the end of Chapel Street.
End of Chapel Street, yeah.
Yeah, and the Chapel Street.
Oh.
The oil, that's right here.
Yeah.
Just puts a thing in the woods next to, next to the opening of Ivana. It put, it puts its location of that two-twelve to the left of that opening, where there's some woods, and then there's a house.
But I always want to question a little bit ahead of them.
There are a couple of these things that jumped out. The one for... Three, the four-fifty and four-forty center wrap, and...
That's, that's all across from Rockland Trust.
I just, I guess I wanted to say this out loud, so you...
Remember, they came in at another meeting and they wanted to put in three units?
That's the one just with the river, right?
Oh, so this zoning, that's, that's what this is?
Yeah.
Batsen?
Put the two units instead.
Oh, okay. The way you've read here, it sounded like they were trying to put two buildings on the same lot, the existing building and, and a new building.
Yeah, it's a long story, they have two, two different buildings on each, we're asking for permission to combine and watch that with a live wire.
Yeah, I remember that story.
That would...
Yeah, I remember that story, it was first presented to the board.
Oh, I guess this is when I thought we should flag to the zoning, it, it's a little, I, putting, putting a thirty-four by forty-foot concrete slab at the end of a paved parking area, and now this is the part that, I'm wondering how this was written, for a thirty-three-foot by thirty-three-foot two-car garage hobby shop, which is a building, and couldn't put in the ground without foundation, and a thirty-four by forty-foot, I guess what I, what flags me here when I first saw it was drainage, it's a really big slab, I didn't know what was gonna happen with that, that slab. It just seems like a crazy thing to do in New England is to pour that much concrete, but I was thinking because of the size of it, it sounds like they...
I doubt they're just gonna let them just do a slab, it's gonna be a foundation.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great hobby shop.
Is this, uh, one of the properties that's had the trailers, containers on it that's raised to ruckus, do you know?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, kind of tucked into the trees. All right, that's all they say, so I know.
Is there any language that clarifies when a hobby becomes a business?
That's a good question, I, I, there, there are some things in the R twenty, thirty, and forty where you can do certain things out of your house and then you can't, you know, all of a sudden it, you start having too many cars there and everything else, yeah.
I could tell you, Rick, years ago, the guy who lived in your house before you, Tim Bell, ran a hobby shop out of his house, model train, because I used to be one of his customers, and then he opened the shop up and that's, block of stores was torn down when Abingdon Savings Bank expanded, his name was Tim Bell, and it was Abby Railway, it was a little girl named Abby, who's all grown up now, this is many years ago. So there's a precedent that someone actually ran a business out of your house.
Out of the garage or the other?
No, he ran it out of the house, he had a little retail store in his house. I was one of his customers. This was back in the seventies. So when you came on the board, I says, oh, I used to go, his house years ago.
Just changed a little bit since then.
They probably need to initial it too, I don't know what...
When were they ever gonna build that thing over by the post office? Another thing that was approved?
I don't know, I don't know if it's, it's fired or not.
We went through all that, and it was...
They only burned it out?
Yeah.
Before you're on away, we need you to sign something.
I also left a copy of the annual town report, if everybody could read it and get back to me with any changes or notes before I submit it, I'd appreciate it.
Anyone wants to go to CTBC?
I am interested, I just need to see if I can make it.
Free will and whatever you want to say.
I have to contact PMP.
And we did change something, we changed something on it, because they had the wrong figure, I thought someone thought it was a net...
Rick, did you got a copy?
I did, yeah, okay. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm interested, I just need a check to make sure I can make it that date.
I'm already in two sessions, so I better be there. One in the middle of the day, one at the end of the day.
I put a one just to heckle you.
Well, one of the ones is just before lunch, and I know the people presenting, so that's gonna be a job I have.
Anything else? Any further business? Motion to withdraw is in order.
Motion.
Aide seconded.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Liz, I gave you my envelope, and I figured you could reuse it.
Oh, thank you.
Four-seventy-seven Washington is...
Good seeing Dan tonight. It was good seeing Dan tonight.
Yes.
And buddy came by my office to, uh...
I know it, that was a great...
It was funny, just happened to be in your office, and I said, you know, the town needs some, um...
Town, that'll be done by Rick, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm impressed, um... All right.